Does everybody have that agenda, the special, should say special meeting?
In the middle where it says agenda. I don't think John's gonna make it tonight. He's got a family crisis and you can share mine. We can share.
That's too little.
And I believe he's out of town, so I guess it falls to me. So if we review the minutes or take a minute to review the minutes of the last meeting. Walk through your four pages down.
I'll make the alternate minutes.
Second.
Any comment, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So you're on this acceptance of the minutes. Next couple of items were a special request by the selectmen, so I'll have to wait until he gets back here. The septic system and the field house. You're up. Septic system.
Does everybody have this? Methodeux.
Thank you.
The septic system update is basically that the numbers are far higher. We've been working with Dennis and following the procedure outlined by our engineers. The numbers that the park is reading is close to three grand a day. And that is right at the threshold that gets you into Department of Public Health or DEP regulation zone. As I told you, tried to inform the commission months and months ago that is what we suspected. It actually came to pass. The engineer's recommendation is that we retool and go through another year of quantifying, check for leaks in the system, change all the toilets out to low-flow toilets, make a concerted effort for the camp counselors to keep an eye on the kids, their water's not running, and do the best we can because obviously as he states that the DEP-regulated septic system will cost, you know, ten times what your estimate is. And the Department of Public Health is far less, but still probably twice what your estimate is here on this new, revised plan that I just saw somewhere. The, I think the, in our discussions with the engineers, it's a good idea to change all the toilets out of all the parks to low-flow toilets. We had issues with bottoming out the well at Brown's Corner during the football games. Seems like they get through a lot of the majority of the game and you get into the end of the afternoon and it's very close. We've got a small expansion tank there. I don't know if Rick, if you know exactly what the capacity of that tank is on the well, but twenty-five gallons or something like that.
Well, I can give you some information about why that happened over the last two years. This year, the reason it happened on that particular day was that whoever was at the park previous evening did not check and lock the bathrooms and there was a faucet left running all night. So that's why we had problems with water that day.
That day.
The previous year was a drought year.
Right.
And so it was just the nature of it.
But I think either way, you know, a move to a larger expansion tank and the low-flow toilet certainly would be a movement for a small amount of investment there. And obviously for Brody Park where the engineers want to recalculate and make sure that we're right because the cost could be significant. I think the big thing here is that when we talk about trying to install a septic system that's going to service three or smaller cabins, really going to have to get to a decision point if we think that the investment in the septic is worthwhile for the use of what are smaller antiquated cabin facilities or whether or not, you know, that's the direction we want to go to because I think that it's going to draw questions from the board of finance on what they want to go. So the long story short is that we continue to test. Dennis, you're still taking numbers every Friday and jotting it down. So we've got the numbers are in the system. And their recommendation is to recalculate because it's so close to the threshold. They don't want us to get bumped into DEP. They want us to stay at DPH level and want to make sure we do everything. There's some level, I think, as Dennis and I have talked about, is that water that's not for consumption. You know, you're out with a hose with the kids doing stuff. That doesn't count yet. We don't quantify it. You know, it's strictly toilet and consumption use and sinks and bathrooms and stuff that we have to quantify. We have to make sure that there's no leaks in the system up there. We've got to, I don't want to call it complex, but it is a big system and the possibility for leaks does exist. And if it is leaking, it could be substantial. That's throwing us into a new, a new level. So, long story short is that they'd like to continue and study it for another season. We didn't make it through the season. I don't think we had any significant issues. You know, Dennis didn't make me aware of any. But whether or not you want to keep that into year one of your capital plan remains to be seen. Obviously, I would think that you might want to put it back here. Let them calculate it one more and see where you want to go, get some other work done. I see that the field house is up next. We have a contract and the field house roof is going right now. The trusses are supposed to be delivered Tuesday. Half the roof is stripped, so we got a little snow in there last night. And that's moving along. We did, we did go, we bid it two ways. We bid it for the existing pitch on the roof and for the raised truss as we described throughout the budget process last year to everybody in town. We did take the upgraded and we actually had them modify their contract a little bit to redo the faciles in the building. We are going to be having the town crew guys go up while the roof is off. The building theoretically is lighter and try to turn the turnbuckles down to draw the building in. This was the, you know, the point of putting the turnbuckles in a few years ago. I guess they're holding just fine, but the opportunity to draw them in a little tighter while the weight is off the roof on the west wall, the low end. I think that everything's going pretty good so far. We're just really waiting for those trusses to come and then that should be sealed up. I think they think Head Kostak, who was the contractor who got the job, thinks that it's really, all systems are go based on Tuesday's delivery of the trust system and that that should be sealed up pretty well. They haven't taken off the roof on the east side yet because they just don't want to leave the whole building exposed, but they did have to do some prep work on the first side, sort of basically broken it into two jobs. The, other than that, I think it's going along pretty good. The electrical system in there, they did, the electrical box in there is soaking wet, so the electricians don't want us using the house power. So I loaned the contractor my new generator, which I got as a result of winter storm Alfred, to the contractor, so we're not using the power in the building right now because it's just too wet.
How's that going to be fixed? I mean, what needs to be done to fix that?
Well, what the recommendation is as of last week is twelve hundred bucks for a new panel. Take it off, pull the meter, put in a new panel. But they just prefer seeing as there's so much water getting in. They'd rather we use an alternate power source. So the generator seems to be working fine. We just told them, don't drop out. So.
And that's simply a result of the roof being off, right? That it got wet? I mean, there isn't another leak somewhere?
No, that's on the wall on the east side. It's just coming down that wall.
So that's a result of leak that hasn't been fixed yet?
Exactly. So. You know, hopefully two weeks from now, we're looking at a sealed building.
Any questions? You're still up. You've got at least three swings. It looks like maybe four.
Parks update. As far as that's concerned, I guess with regard to Brown's Corner, Tim Trout tells me that he's starting a job, or was supposed to start a job this week, that will remove the last bit of fill out of Brown's Corner. Once that's completed, we have Cape Cod fences coming in to finish the site plan fencing work along Route 202. And he also gave us a quote to put more of the wooden fence along the arced driveway that will be the new driveway down behind to baseball from the corner of the parking lot. We'll have that field there. He estimated that would be five thousand dollars roughly to do that. The, we did end up putting in the rocks along the, was it the south side where you had the area of the issue where we were concerned that people would be sneaking in. This will suck. The fencing on that other side will give us the protection of those fields there. You know, after that, we have to deal with contractors for the electrical relocation, which I've been dealing with. Rick, we know that the PVC piping conduit is already underneath the road. It's just a matter of making sure that we have the appropriate conduit to separate the phone and the electrical and everything there. Rick, did you get a chance to go back and look to see?
I do not.
I know that there's at least one.
I think there's two.
Yeah.
I just want to verify with Tim.
And then after that, obviously we'll have a clean palette to wrap up all the ADA work. You know, the remainder of the trees, the remainder of the driveway. And like I said, try to install the low-flush toilets. You know, make sure that we're all ADA, handicap accessible. And get the remainder of the site plan work done as quickly as possible.
Can I just ask what the purpose of putting that fence is in along that back road?
Well, there was concern along the driveway arc.
Yeah, going back down towards the baseball barns and that one.
Because what we want to do is create a barrier to protect cars from going down onto the field, onto the field space. That's why we put the rocks on the other side. But we also wanted to find parking. We're going to try to add, I've talked to Rista. She thought the commission would mind instead of putting a single lane driveway arc. Maybe we double that up and do nose-in parking for special event days when we're really packed down there. If we want to do another twenty or so or thirty nose-in parking along that arc. Because we still have days when it's just, as you know, picture day things, it's just packed to the hilt.
I just clarify for, this is the existing driveway that goes like behind Field One down to the barn?
With the new connector to the new driveway.
And that would come?
Do you want to see the map? I got it. It's easy on the map.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. So the existing entrance?
Gets closed.
Is closed. So then what you're saying is you would come along the top of the driveway and come down?
An arc along a row of trees to the corner of the now completed parking lot where that new gate is right in the corner.
Oh, I see, I understand. Okay.
And what we're trying to do there is that'll be all stoned, all the way down and cleaned up and leveled. It's a little bumpy through there. But when we level that out on the upper level above the fields, we can do nose-in parking there and gain another twenty spots without really taking too much away. You'll have on the left side, you'll have trees that will continue the row of trees across the front, which was the requirement from the zoning. They wanted screening. And then parking on the inside. All the level open areas still could do K-1 soccer or whatever you want. Not really big enough to do anything else. But, and then you have basketball court, more trees in the corner where it said on the site plan preserve the trees. And then you had the ADA. Really need to work with, you know, Rista on the final. To me, unclear on the plan. It shows that whole area in between the restrooms and the pavilion is predominantly paved with a, with a small area in the middle. And I don't know if that's the look that we're trying to get to here. I think that we need to connect the buildings and get to the walkway that has the correct pitch for the ADA access that gets you from the top section down. I'm not an ADA expert. I don't know the exact pitch for what the Handicap, Americans with Disabilities Act is, but there's a specific grade to get you from the top level down to the ball fields.
It's one to twelve.
One to twelve pitch. So we have to have that all done. And that's frankly a little bit tricky in getting that, you know, bit out, but it's all drawn out on a plan, so we have to complete that, get all our signage and things like that done. So.
I'm a little concerned that taking green space away for parking that would facilitate three or four or five events out of probably twenty times two is forty-eight events. So are you open to suggestions from this commission? It kicks it around and thinks that we might be better off leaving the green space and having cars park on the green space when we need additional spots rather than dedicating an area to parking that may only be used half a dozen times a year?
Well, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but I'm down there every Saturday and I tell you, the parking lot is packed. You know, I mean, there's just no doubt about it. The difficulty in gravel parking, as you know, is that it's not paved and there aren't lines. So some people come in and take what is proverbially two spaces or park unusually. We know that the days that football comes down there is that those are overflow days. Any of the picture days are overflow days. And then there are the days when we just have, it seems like every activity going on, whether we have, and Rick knows, whether it's travel soccer or rec soccer and then baseball playing on both fields or vice versa.
So how many times do you think you find people parking on the street? Because of a lack of parking in the given area?
Well, I think that the amount of the investment over perpetuity is five thousand for the wood and maybe another fifteen hundred or two thousand for the thing. I don't think you can justify putting more green space or field space there because you don't have enough parking for the field space that you have.
So people are currently parking on the street?
Yeah. People park on the street, they park on the island.
How many times a year do you think they have to park on the street?
I don't, I haven't quantified it, but it's, I think it's enough that we have, if we have the opportunity to cure it once and for all, why not take advantage of the opportunity?
What I'm wondering is, could you do that? I mean, typically what Cape Cod does and what they did with the guardrail fencing down there is none of that is cemented in.
Right.
What I'm wondering is if you could, if you wanted to do that at a later date when, you know, we're talking about a future field somewhere else that's going to require parking area, whether at that point that guardrail is no longer needed at Brown's Corner, it could be removed and used at another facility?
Well, I'm not concerned about the expense so much as the loss of green playing space because that's what seems to be needed most by this town is playing space. And to remove an area twenty-five, twenty feet wide and a couple hundred feet long, four hundred square feet or so of playing space for parking that would only regularly be used a half a dozen times a year, it would seem to me, but it's up to this commission, not just me. So I think the commission needs to kick it around. It would seem to me that those half a dozen times, you just park the cars on the green space. So the rest of the year, that green space is intact. Whereas if you permanently make it a forty-foot wide or ten feet for driveway and twenty feet for park, nose-in parking, so you're taking a thirty-foot wide swath and making it permanent parking, which could never be used for green space. Yet it's only going to be used a half a dozen times a year for parking. So anyway, I think this commission, and hopefully the selectmen will be open to suggestions from this commission.
I don't know, I don't know what you could actually fit up there other than a K-1 field if that. I don't know that the inclusion of the...
Practice, practice fields while one football team shows up, while the other football teams are playing. Soccer practice fields when one team shows up. T-ball perhaps? I don't know what the size of the T-ball fields are. There's a lot of things that a flattened green space could be used for, for athletic flying, flying kites.
My general take on it is you have more field space there than you need and less parking there that you need. I think that if you wanted to move K-1 up there, you could easily fit it with the parking. If you wanted to put a T-ball field up there, you could easily fit it with the parking.
So are you saying you're really not open to suggestions from this commission?
No, I am. I am. I just, I tell you, I think the greater need, having studied it for two years now and been down there every weekend with my kids playing ball, soccer, baseball, you name it, is that if you go down and watch the activity, you'll see that people are parking up on the island, they're parking up in the front of it. It's not just six weekends. It's a good portion of the summer. It's really illustrated on the days that football is there. Those are obviously four days that is a guarantee, but it's much more than that. So, you know, if you want to look at it, that's fine. We can hold off on it. What I'm looking to do is get this done and get this project wrapped up this spring. Does anybody have some feeling? Paul, you got any feeling on the matter? Do you have any?
I'm not familiar with this, so I don't feel like I'm qualified to really comment at this point, but yeah.
But will the money be taken out of our capital expenditure?
No, it's funded through our project. You know, the difficulty obviously is we want to hold off until we get the ADA, the electrical reload done and the basketball court done. Those are the things that are the subjective issues. The fencing work is not a big picture, but it's very difficult. Done and been in construction your whole life. Those ADA things are something that is not easy to peg in terms of a bid scenario. I really don't know what to expect there in terms of the exact pricing. I think that the toilets and things like that, I think are rather routine to get, you know, Mike Coath or local plumber or somebody to go in there and redo, you know, a half a dozen toilets or what have you and make sure that they're all ADA. I don't think is a big thing. I think the electrical reload, I think will be a decent build, but I don't think that it's anything that can't be handled. And as I've said all along, as I said to the board of finance, I think that we're generously funded there and we should be able to complete and really put a ribbon on it and have it done. We don't want to get into a situation where we're halfway down the road and we don't get the largest component of the job done. But, you know, I, I mean, I use that park every weekend. You got parking problems.
I, I, no way for my efforts, although we don't have the children anymore. We got one for what? At least get on the, that's staying.
Sally, it's...
The park is fantastic. It's packed. It is packed.
It's awesome. But we also have a large plenty of people also parking in the back down by the snack shacks for baseball where we're squeezing ten or fifteen cars on a daily basis where that really wasn't meant to be a parking area, but it's just out of necessity now. People are squeezing in down there because they know there's nowhere else to go. You know? Some coaches use it...
No, mostly it's because they're lazy and they don't want to walk down there.
I think it's, you know, necessity is the mother of repentance, you know?
I'm serious. I'm serious.
I've got arthritis and guess what? I want to take the closest spot I can get. Do I have to get a handicap sticker?
That's why we have handicap parking on the other side of the soccer fields. We need to go, we need to go in over there now.
Hey, if I was a lot younger, oh, I wouldn't want to walk in down there.
No, 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 you drive in over there.
Yeah.
That's why it's over there.
It's a tough, tough, tough. You know what I'd like to do? I'd like to see that map and...
I can get, I got it right now. So you want to pull it down now?
We've got a bunch of stuff to do, Dan. Let's move along.
Well, other than that, we have the Brody Park South issue. We had what I think is a couple of different things going on. We had letters from Conservation Commission. We had an opinion from the P and Z attorney for some well-needed clarification on the use of Brody Park South. Parks, as we all now know, are permitted in the R2 zone. The use therein is subject to the latitude here. In other words, it's perfectly acceptable to have football playing in the park. It's not a violation in any way, shape or form to have people go out and recreate and play soccer, baseball, football, frisbee, golf, snowshoe or whatever. I think that there's a lot of people that have tried to make a mountain out of a molehill out of the truck getting stuck for taking out of the pod. I was very disappointed with the way that was portrayed at the expense of some volunteers. I think it's unfortunate that people choose to act in that way when really people drive on the grass at our parks all the time. We have New Hartford Day, we have Big Wheels of Brody, we have Alliance Club, we have people that drive on the grass all over the place. Somebody, somebody gets stuck here or there. It's happened many, many times in the past. It'll probably happen many, many times in the future. I think the volunteers from youth sports and the football came up with a nice donation to cover the cost of some topsoil and some seed and hay. The leasing company that leased the pod that was up there, that was the point of getting stuck, came up and volunteered equipment. And I think it was, what we see is the best part of the volunteers around here is that they, they know that they care about the parks just as much as everybody at this table does. And they took care of business and they got it done. And it's no worse for wear and it's done and completed. I think that the larger issue here is that we all know that we have some growing pains for competition space. I think that having the resolution that there's really no significant issue with having football or any other group practice in Brody Park South, we know that we're really not going to be able to have new competition space online by next year. And who knows for that matter, maybe not the year after. So I think we really need some clarification on, you know, the use of Brody Park South to put the thing to bed. You know, I think that the longer we, you know, really work on this without clarity. And I think it's okay to say that it's, you know, having football in Brody Park South is not optimal and we are searching, but you know, I think that, you know, it needs to be understood that for now, it is, Brody Park South is a park and it is okay to recreate there and it is okay to play sports there. And I, because I think that we have, we're having a hard time managing the expectation. I think that there's a certain group, which, you know, I think the Conservation Commission falls into by the tone of their letter, that is looking for a resolution that football might go somewhere else by next year. And I think that it's a pretty certain impossibility that we would have whether we modified existing space or purchased new space. But I think it's pretty much certain that it's probably impossible to have new field space online by next year. And therefore, we don't do our constituents good by leading people to incorrect or, you know, unreasonable expectations. I think that, you know, there are some people that obviously are not happy with the fact that people are recreating in the park, but it is, as we were all informed, a park. And that's what people naturally do on the park, is they recreate. So I think that, you know, we need to have, you know, some level of clarity and understanding that until we resolve the issue and decide where we go as a town in terms of providing suitable alternatives, I think that we need to, you know, define the position here that it's okay to play in a park. Because we only have a limited amount of parks and we don't have, as we said, sufficient field space. It's hard to reproduce what is the equivalent of three acres of generally level field space. I mean, we all know. That said, I think that we had a request at the Board of Selectment for funds studies, you know, funds to study a parcel of land at the end of Old Steel Road. And I think that the Board of Selectmen will probably give direction on whether we think that's a suitable location for field space or not or whether money is better served at, you know, studying Ann Antolini further. I know that, you know, we've been going around the same debate whether, you know, it's suitable for Brody Park South or Ann Antolini since 2008. You know, and I think it goes to support the theory that creating new field space takes a heck of a lot of time and money. But I think that during the process, we need to manage the expectations of our constituents to let them know that it took forty years to get Brown's Corner to the condition and quality that it is now. These things don't happen overnight. And it's going to take some time. And, you know, a lot of support out of the Board of Finance. I really, I think after talking to Alicia, and I haven't had the chance to talk to Jack Casey, New Selectmen, of what his thoughts are on Old Steel Road, but I know that, you know, I'm in the middle and leaning against thinking that's an appropriate location. I don't know what Alicia's thought process is. I think if we're of the mind that we need to acquire new land, it needs to be something that solves the needs of the town for the next thirty to forty years, something similar to fifteen to twenty acres. You know, something that provides a similar opportunity that exists at Brody Park South, you know, that has open, clear meadows.
Look.
You know, in a good location with good access. These things just don't exist on Old Steel Road.
The roads- It's the town, but that's okay.
So. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the expectation of everybody here is.
I don't think, I don't think, yeah. I don't think anybody has ever implied, because virtually every meeting of this commission of Brody Park South, which I know everyone here that has been to every meeting there, every single meeting has at some point during the meeting told the public that is there, there is, there are no funds to do this. But it must be started somewhere so that if funds become available, there is a place to plug them in. That's been the premise of this committee, that's been the premise of Brody South. If anyone has misled the public into thinking that this is going to happen sometime in the next, I mean, it would be wonderful if it happens in five years, but no one is implying that it would. Then those are the similar type rumors that swirl about every project of any consequence in town. So I don't believe anyone is misleading, anyone in official capacity is misleading the public with respect to how soon this may happen.
I agree, and I've heard you speak on the matter, Dan, and I'm not saying that you said that. I, I think that just as a group, we need to be firmer in our, and clearer that when people come to meetings with the expectation that something's going to happen immediately, we need to say, look, you know, I, I know that people may not like the realization that, you know, sports groups are gonna meet and play in Brody Park South or something, but it's gonna take us a while to adjust here. You know, even, even if we had a miracle of funding to go, and I, I have the engineers' reports right here for Ann Antalini. We know that that's a sizable undertaking when we have a lot of issues before the town in terms of public works or drainage or whatever. And, you know, you guys have other issues on your, your capital plan. I'm just thinking that we need to be, you know, pretty loud and clear in terms of developing a consistent message that, you know, before people leave the room, you have to understand that in all actuality, if your, if your expectation is that people are not going to play organized sports in Brody Park South anymore, that, that's really not a reasonable expectation because we don't, A, we don't have anywhere else to go and B, it's gonna take a lot of time to provide a, a different alternative if that's the will of the town. So.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm not trying, I know, I've heard you say it, but I know that we have had more and more people and I read, you know, the, uh-
Can I see that, whatever it is you're talking about, Conservation Commission or whatever, I don't, can't seem to find that.
Well, it's-
Yeah, but if, I think it-
Oh, it's not in our stuff.
No, it was a letter to-
But I think it ends, just so you get a flavor of it, the Conservation have the knowledge and resources to do, they're talking about trying to do a, uh, a new stewardship plan for Brody Park South. And they want something adopted and placed before the next round of seasonal demand, demands take place on the park's resources. In other words, we'd like to get something done before next year, you know, so.
It's all well and good, you know, everybody seems to have their own agenda. And I understand that, but we're talking about a hundred and fifty acres of land. And I think what boggles my mind the most is that nobody wants to play nice in the sandbox. Everybody wants their own issues developed when this is a park. This is a park to be used by the town of New Hartford, by the people of New Hartford. And I truly do not understand why we can't all work together. It doesn't make any sense to me. Not that it should, because that's, that's the way of the, the people in general. But you can't expect that and, and Dan, I've heard you say it a hundred times. We're working on it, nothing is set in stone and, and you can't have letters like this written and, and things put out in public when there isn't an answer just yet.
It's a big nut to crack.
It's a big nut to crack. And, you know, I have to say that, you know, poor football gets the brunt of this issue because they're the ones practicing right now. There was a time when it was only soccer practicing up there.
But I think that there's a certain element that would like to see that more as a preserve than as a park. But I think that's an expensive choice to make.
That's, that's not what it's for, a hundred and fifty acres. You know, I've heard it, oh, well, the, the dragonflies and the, do you think the dragonflies and the butterflies won't go to another bush ten feet away? If you take down this one, they will, it's, it's just nature, that's the way it happens. But I think you also have to make sure that you understand whether you have kids playing sports right now or not, that people do. People live in this town, they do have kids that play sports. There's gotta be a way to co-manage this, it's, it's appalling to me that you have this kind of friction in a town the size of New Hartford.
I don't, I don't think it's as big a friction as you think and I think in the first-
Oh, no, it is.
In the first meeting that we had, I, I think I made the statement that I think there's enough land up there for everybody to get a little bit of what they want. In terms of sports field or hiking or whatever. A lot of people that have done work in the past with build backs are doing some, uh, land acquisition to get the, uh, hiking connection to Marsh Road, down to, you know, Shady Brook to Barella, you know, there's opportunities there that's all outlined in the plan of Conservation Development. I think there's a lot of good things that can go on there. But I think that, you know, A, nobody's really making any statements towards making any, uh, applications towards the town until we resolve this. But I think that, you know, people like to start talking about there's gonna be a stadium there or something like that, who's saying that kind of stuff? You know, it's, it's kinda crazy. You know, nobody's talking about doing that or anything. Got, uh, a big wide open path there and I think that even if we did move to develop a competition space somewhere, I don't know that the town would be, uh, making the best of decisions if they chose to walk away from the recreational aspect of that property one way or the other. You know, to have, to have the ability to-
Because we're gonna go.
Do whatever we can do there, whether it's practicing soccer or baseball or hitting a golf ball or whatever. I just think it's a park, as, as simply stated, people are gonna go there. So I think that, uh, in large part, I think that, um, the clarity was good in terms of it's a permitted use. It's up to us to decide what we wanna do with it. I would say that, you know, for the short term, I think it, you know, it, it provides a need, the ends, uh, you know, you know, to provide some level of practice space, but, um, I think that the difficult thing is managing expectations and telling people, you know, you know, firmly that, you know, we have needs. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, well, thank you very much, good update, let us know. What's, what's, what's going on in some of the areas that, that we're involved with? And on to Dennis for the five-year plan.
I think Dan had some more, did you have something on the five-year plan, Dan?
Well, I see, I, I did send John and, uh, I did send John a couple of notes that, you know, the Capital Subcommittee, once again, is getting ready to start doing their work and I took out the old five-year plan and just made some notes on it. I've had, uh, the opportunity to do a couple of things and just wanted to point out a couple of things of questions or concerns as, as we go, you know, is the Rec Commission and the Selectmen on the same thing? When you looked at the old capital plan, I know that Dennis has revamped some of it here and we just did make a statement about perhaps putting the septic tank back here while we continue to study that. But in the old capital plan in, uh, the first year, eleven, twelve, and granted, we didn't get the septic plant done, but the, the big question I had, really twofold, was the, uh, this dog park that's been talked about. I know that we have a huge dog contingency.
The dog park was talked about and never, and, and basically after that, a couple of things happened after that plan was adopted and further talked about the dog park, it decided, that came up in conjunction with Brody South because that's where, some indication was made in a public hearing about a dog park in Brody South. So that was thrown out at the table and our initial blush with the first five-year plan was in part make it a wish list. So since public citizens had mentioned the dog park in Brody South, it ended up on that list. But this commission felt that were you to prioritize spending, creating a dog park would be pretty far down the list since we are a very rural, rural community.
But you had it in year one of your capital plan is the only reason, so it led me to believe that there was a priority.
I'm just filling you in that after that went in,
Okay.
the, the commission reassessed the situation.
Believe, I would agree.
It decided that-
I would agree that putting a dog park in Brody Park South is a bad idea.
Not a, not a, uh-
But I wouldn't agree that developing a future plan to have a dog park is, I think is, somewhere, is a good idea.
Sometime.
I actually did some research, there's a great dog park in Pawtucket next to my father-in-law's house. I got some pictures and took, uh, some things for you guys and their rule system. Uh, you know, if it's not a big issue, I, I, if the location is the challenge, but the desire is still there, that's fine. It was just a question I had that, if you guys are tableing that, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, it's been tabled, there's a lot of other uses for funds.
Oh, we have a lot of town land like up in East Cat Hill that could be paved into a dog park, we can't use it for anything else. We use it for the contours and the-
Are you recommending that the Sirdam Farm be designated as a farm?
As long as we get some rent out of that house, no, 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 a hundred dollars a month.
Well, that's the, um, well, let me just go through my questions we went through, but I don't wanna take up the whole thing. I know you, that Dennis has penned another one, I don't know where you guys, I, I know that I talked to, in my passings, you and Sally have come by me. My big things were the handicap accessible sidewalk and the, the beach thing, I mean, you know, we're talking about putting lifts and railings and the whole thing here because I saw it as thirty-five hundred dollars and I thought it was a, a much bigger thing. Now I see in the new plan it's five thousand, but I, I don't know what the legal requirements are for ADA, um, beach lifts and things like that. I think if we're talking about trying to do a paved or, or concrete walkway down to the waterfront, I think that's fine, but I think that only goes halfway because I think there's all the, the rigging and, and ADA things, I think it's a bigger animal. And I would say that we would probably get a consult from our engineer on what the legal requirements are on that because I bet you, I guarantee you, that's a little bit bigger animal than what you think it is. So I just had a big question and, and my questions were lifts and railings and et cetera and engineer. Because, you know, that was my question. The pavilion issue again was just like the dog, you had a pavilion and in your year two, my question was where? You know, was it in conjunction with the fieldhouse or, or near the fieldhouse going down the hill? I've heard different things, I know that in the original master plan for Brody North, there was a pavilion
Yeah, right.
on there. And is that, is that the location that you folks were thinking about, is that what you're really, down the hill?
I think that-
Over behind the skate park?
I think that years two and three years beyond the next year, especially given the current circumstances, are simply ideas in the buff, raw ideas, things that have been kicked around over the years from time to time that this commission feels will benefit the town. Um, were the funds available to do it? And in, in an effort to make a long-term plan, these ideas have been listed, but no formal studies, no formal reviews, no engineering, no, no rough estimates have been done on any of these. These figures were generated from the best that the variety of us with our personal experiences could do outside of the Callahan lighting, which we actually did two years ago, get an estimate on. Um, because it had been a, a great deal of interest back then, as you can see, it's fallen down our list of priorities. So it, the request was, Brody Wish List, see what you think it might cost to do this, and that's what this list has generated. There's no research, I, I believe there's extensive research behind the challenge course. The septic tank price was arrived at because a local tank installer who does it professionally for a living had talked informally with Farmington Valley in an informal situation with what was up, going on up there two years ago. And he and the woman at Farmington Valley came away with a concept of perhaps putting a small septic system in for each cabin. Each septic system may be about twenty-five thousand. So it would be two, and they could be done two years apart, three years apart, whatever. And that was a rough concept that this commission was given for free by an installer who had done a moderate amount of research. And without, you know, expensive budgets to do reviews on these situations, that's the best this commission can do at this time. Is try to use the expertise that we have and the townspeople who volunteer their expertise to, to arrive at some of these figures.
That's, that's gonna be a, a big enchilada. I think the engineers' review cursory was that, you know, septic systems could be a minimum of fifty. And if it goes into the D and P range-
Well, that's in essence what-
As his quote was, you don't have enough money.
Right, and that's, in essence, that's what this designer in conjunction with Farmington Valley came up with, it was twenty-five thousand each for two small systems. So we're at the same, roughly the same figure. But anyway, moving on to answer your questions, the third, fourth and fifth, um, items down here with respect to prices are just very, very broad estimates based on a little expertise we have here.
You talking about on the new twelve thirteen?
On the twelve thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and fifteenth, the new one. Same thing, we don't have at this point, given the financial condition of the town, we don't have the resources to go out and get bids. And realistically, outside of getting, you, you know as well as we do, off-the-cuff prices, you're not gonna get a bid on a twelve thirteen project or a fourteen fifteen project. And they have to be, there are certainly gonna be figures that a friend of the commission throws out and says, well, yeah, I think you can do this. Nobody's gonna finish a job two years out, of this scope anyway. Maybe if you were building, an eighty-story building, you, you might get it.
That pavilion for twenty thousand, add another zero.
Wow, no, that depends on the size of the pavilion, we don't wanna rebuild the town hall.
Wait a minute, guess what? You, you, you know, be realistic, prices today in construction are unbelievable.
Yeah.
All right?
I, I have a client, I have a client that builds pavilions on, he does it for well less than fifty grand. So this twenty may not be right, but it's not two hundred.
Well, but, but let's talk about the area first, so I could say that-
Oh, it's a fair deal. But we don't, we don't know, Dan, this is four years out. These are ideas that were kicked around, we'd like a pavilion up there, it's on the back, has this committee looked at where would be good for, for that? No. It has any of these, I, I mean, well, the beach is, is existing, so the stuff that we wanna do down at the beach-
Maybe it's too unrealistic to, to go that far ahead.
And that's okay to say, Don, but that's, that's okay.
Yeah, but, but that's what the Board of Finance is asking, so they're answering their question.
But, well, but I think that even if you were to say to them, we're trying to redefine our goals, I, I wrote up five things in my head when I went through that I thought about somewhat that meet the capital thing, the five, it has to be five grand or more and last five years. Okay, anything else falls under maintenance, that's your, that's your budget line item in your budget. I thought, you got a year from April in the Brody House, please expires. Okay, what's gonna happen to that building? Is the building gonna go to make way for new opportunities, is it gonna stay? What's gonna happen? The Selectmen have already opined, granted the last board, it's not like it binds, but the Selectmen, Tom, myself and Bruce all said that they didn't think we should be in the rental business, you know, in terms of that. And that it occupies a real valuable piece of land at the corner of that park that could probably be used.
This commission's been saying that for how long now?
So, but, but just as I'm saying is, are we or are we not, is this group gonna support removing that building? That's, that would be a capital situation. The other thing was hiking and biking trips. You got two major corridors, the one from Brody South to basically Bakerville School, Barella Road, Shady Brook Road, Marsh Road and the connector to Brody South. It's in the plan of Conservation Development, it's been talked about for years, it's a possibility. The second one is from Antalini School up through Sirdam to now Phillips, across the back to Gula. It's a mate, that's a second, they're both massive, but there's no parking at Sirdam.
There's no parking at Gulas?
Which is, that's right.
Other side of the road, three cars.
Neither, neither of them have parking. Plaiscape Expansion was the third thing that I thought about, I mean- I mean, we have very successful to to keep it lively and fresh, I I don't have any opposition to something like that.
Friends of Brody.
Well, but but doing something like that. And then uh. The waterfront repair. The waterfront repair, we know that that waterfront is dangerous. Had had I had more experience being the first selectman, I would have known that this year was the big drawdown year. You know, we know that we have people wanna do it, but gosh, you go down there, anybody takes a look at that, the the concrete that was poured there is is fifty plus years old, it's all tilted and dangerous, we've had this. We know that we had requests to get in there in the evenings and stuff, it's dangerous, I think the right move was made, you know? It's it's not ideal, but you gotta do it in a drawdown year. And, you know, that's something that came to my mind. I'm just throwing these things out, I'm not trying to do it, I'm sure that everybody here has their different ideas about what's going on. You know, we have all the donated supplies, you know, for the exterior of the fieldhouse, we're gonna have that sealed up. Another idea.
I I have been a strong advocate of redoing that beach, enlarge it, all right? Clearing up the trees and the trees that are leaning to the water, you know? I've got requests from people that wanna go fishing there, but they can't because they can't cast the the line out without they can't tangle up of the trees.
So you're talking about just a fishing area or extending the beach area?
Well. Clean up that whole area.
Cause I've had people complain that they can't seem to get a place to fish now.
Right.
Used to be able to go fishing and now it's all swimming and the two don't mix.
Well.
You know?
Man, I I don't know much.
Another good idea.
Funage there is, I I forgot, okay, I I one time I knew, but uh you're not right about that concrete. That should be taken out, that should have been taken out years ago.
A lot of people are going to the stone wall, you know, they on the drawdown, they build it up with a beautiful stone wall. A lot of the houses along the West Hill Road frontage, if you go and take a look, looks gorgeous, it's nice. You know? Just an idea. So. I mean, I see and I see that there's, you know, Dennis has that fifteen sixteen, but I think that that's something that's uh certainly a valid concern. So, did you folks all get a chance to look at this or is this something that you're in agreement on? Or is this an idea for fleshing out that you guys are gonna massage and move around here?
Right. This is this is a rough.
Real rough. Real rough.
The part of this is a result of the request coming from the board of finance, I believe um in early, late October, early November and the storm canceled that November meeting.
Right.
So although it wouldn't be a heck of a lot more fleshed out, because we would have had more time to discuss these issues had we had a November meeting. Which that's not. As we all know, as you well know. So yes, this is will be kicked around by the committee.
What about the paved walkway? Are you talking about a a walkway around the?
From the parking lot up to the park, you know, it's rocky and just.
So right from the the fenced gate up and around?
Right. I don't think there's been any work done there for fifteen years or so. But while we own this five year plan, initially we had the uh challenge course at year fifteen or sixteen. And as part of our nine 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 plan, I think this challenge course should be something that should happen like right away. Um we do a good job at taking care of the little guys, we can just blow up a water balloon, throw it out there. Uh the older people, we do a good job there, but the teenagers, a ropes course, challenge course, this is something that will help with team building, exercise, conflict resolution. And I think somebody had a question about how much revenue we generate. Well, I mean, we did the basketball court at thirty five, forty thousand dollars, doesn't generate any income, but it's used all the time. But this ropes course, not only can we use it, but we can also get our money back in a couple of years, two, three years.
Have you got any prices on?
There's something in the uh, yes, we have some prices. And here here's the thing, um there are not a lot of people who do this kind of work. And the guy who I talked to about eight or nine people, and they're all live in town, experts at ropes, this ropes thing. And uh this guy has built courses in Hartford, West Hartford, this is all over Connecticut. And anybody else that we're gonna uh pursue to do something like this, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, they're just not in Connecticut and they charge their fee just to come out. I mean, just to show up, they're gonna charge their fee. So I mean, this guy is reputable, um like I said, there are eight or nine people in town who point to this guy and say, that's the guy you want to build your course. He came up here about uh about two weeks ago and we looked at a spot right outside, um I don't know if you guys familiar with the pit where the Cub Scouts sometimes do a little uh campfire. Right there, right inside of there, we could uh put all this stuff right here. A lot of these elements are low elements, we can pick them up, take them inside, you know, people were concerned about safety if you leave stuff up. And uh some of the stuff we could, you know, roll up twenty feet in the air. So we wouldn't have to worry about the safety issue. But I think this is something that uh should be priority number one. We talk about programming and uh bringing in teams and bringing in more money, all that kind of stuff. So I would like to see this as uh priority number one, if if you will.
Is this similar to, um I can't think of the name of the place that the kids go to in.
Olderidge.
Olderidge, thank you. Is this similar to what they do there? They also have something, there's another one that they go to.
Sixth grade, they take the kids to Catamount.
Catamount.
To do a ropes course, the kids love.
Something something.
Something similar like Catamount, thank you.
Kids love it, tell me.
Army War?
Yeah, definitely that.
Well, they have, they have a lot of classings that.
This is from our last presentation too, Dennis, you indicated that this was easily expandable for much less fees. Would we wanna expand it in the future?
Yes.
If this is not finite, if it proves to be really successful.
Yeah.
Expansion would not cost a great deal because this is the foundation.
Right, we we can start with uh, you know, we can start with a, you know, glass of water and add, you know, we can add on and add on, you know? We can uh we can definitely add on. But I think this would be a a great asset uh to the park and to the programs. But like I said, this, I know we like to get, you know, three bids for everything, but.
This is similar, the ropes part of it is probably similar to the ropes courses that Antolini had and used extensively for an extended period of time.
Yeah.
And they had a great deal of success with that ropes course and found the kids really enjoyed it. So it's not, I mean, it's it's clear that the liability side of it was clearly addressed by the board of ed and they were comfortable.
Right, and and the good thing about it is that the trainers, it's part of this, the prices, the training. And there, all the trainers live in New Hartford, all the people that this guy would uh seek out to to do the training, they all live in New Hartford, so that's that's the good thing about it. And I would be part of the training myself.
I was gonna say, you indicated that you would also be trained, right?
Yes, that, yeah, I've been get trained myself and uh I I I think this would just be a a great tool to uh add to the program.
So this would work itself into your summer program?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Summer, fall, you can use this thing except for the winter time, you can use this all throughout the season except the the winter. Like I said, uh there are not a lot of people who do this work. So thi- this guy is like a go to guy, uh if we were looking to get this done. And and the rest of the people are, like I said, out of state. And there's one other guy who didn't have a a great reputation, so we probably wouldn't uh look at him to uh do this work. But like I said, not a lot of people do this work.
And another source of revenue is properly supervised would be independent groups outside of camp, right?
Right.
Because just like Randy Brooks' hall, this would be part of the facility that could be rented by a group of Cub Scouts from Hartford that wanted to come out and do a ropes course.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, is there, are there any videos of what this encounters that we could, you know, you at home on on the website or whatever?
Um yeah, probably on YouTube, there's some things on YouTube you could look at. But it also provided a twenty year um study that that's every ropes course uh around have. And it talks about the level of safety, you know, compares it to football or or skate or skating or what have you. So it's a a very safe uh activity, it's a twenty year plan uh in your package. But there's some things on YouTube to answer questions on that.
I know, but I I would like to see, you know, some a video of it.
I'll I'll send you a link, I'll send you a link tomorrow.
All right.
You could you could you could probably go to to uh Catamount's website and see what they do.
Oh, yeah, that's probably true too.
All right.
And as a, I think, once we get it up, I think um it'd be a good test to have all the whole commission, you know, try it out and.
What a good idea, Dennis, I'm so glad you thought of that.
What bothers this video camera?
I'm going right after Dan.
Dad said he should go first.
I'm going right after Dan.
I'll be out of town that day.
No problem.
You do?
I got a Berkeley meeting in New Hampshire at our office.
There is Dennis was holding the line up.
I hold the line. Any any other discussion of the rough draft of a five year plan at this point? And and go into it very adept at our next meeting? Dennis, you're up, our budget.
A- as far as the finance budget, uh we we're looking pretty good, it's still early, we're not in the red for anything. Uh you can uh look at that budget at your leisure. But the capital account, as you can see, we're tapped out. Um we just had the roofs done, we had two roofs, the nurses cabin and the preschool cabin, they were leaking uh pretty bad badly and uh we got that done. So all the cabins up there um have new roofs, every cabin up there pretty much has a a new roof. But like I said, we're tapped out in the capital account.
See dad, who'll lend you? See dad, don't give me twenty.
And uh last uh the last meeting, we talked about basketball, giving those guys a thousand dollars and we want them to provide us with a financial statement and they did, that's in the package. So we, what's that?
And and your budget for this coming year, have you asked the the board of finance for like five thousand dollars for incidental expenses?
Discretionary fund, I was thinking of that too.
Well, we can't use the word discretionary, I I would like to, board of finance, we didn't use that word, not because I couldn't think of a better word and I got my head wrong. So you don't use the word discretionary, there's no such thing as discretionary funds.
I I think the important thing to remember here, and and here's the classic example, the two cabin roofs that you just roofed, A, were not on your capital plan, B, were not reviewed by the board of finance and technically fall under capital. So they wanna see specifically, and and while this one went through, that, you know, they're looking to, when you you say you're gonna do a capital project, they're they're evaluating what the school needs, what the town garage needs, everything, what it needs. So to have these things that come up and then all of a sudden say, well, we just did that and it didn't get any scrutiny from the board of finance or the people of the town when they go to vote, it's not gonna happen in the future. You know, that's why what makes the the fleshing out of that five year capital plan so important is because even if you're willing to say, well, you know, yeah, year three, there's something on there that, heck, if we could do it in year one, we could do it and there's a price attached to it, that's something where they might say, well, look, we can't fund you all the money you want, but if maybe that project in year three, you know, might work now, you know, cause it's less money. And, you know, the whole thing is, there's a capital subcommittee by ordinance, all these things are supposed to be voted on through them and then go to the board of finance. And, you know, as the economy stays tight, you know, technically, those type of things should have been evaluated at town meeting before we vote on things. So I don't think anybody's arguing with the debate that you gotta seal up a roof, but technically, anything, the definition is five years or five thousand dollars.
Well, I think we just need to work on semantics with the board of finance with respect to that. Because the way the budgets are currently structured for a cabin to spring a leak, there's no way we could fix it in the current fiscal year. It would have to come up with that, and I'm sure there's a mechanism there that we can get a definition from board of finance to properly address that situation, where clearly our maintenance budget is not high enough to solve a a problem in excess of five thousand dollars. And you don't know in February of two thousand and twelve, what particular major problems may arise between July two thousand and twelve and June two thousand and thirteen. And I'm sure that with better with better clarity from the board of finance, we could address that situation. I'm sure they don't wanna leave you hanging, because they understand that we have major assets that need to be made. So I think that that's just a discussion I need to have or done with the board of finance.
Well, and I think that what they're looking for is, you know, better description on, they're giving you thirty four thousand dollars in contracted services and maintenance, you know? What's maintenance, what's capital? They're they're looking for us to to stick to, I mean, and this started before I got here, as I tried to tell everybody, this whole evaluation of what's capital, you know? What's going in, get on the thing, send them the list, what are you looking to do? Yeah?
Can I address that? Great.
The uh next thing that we have is.
Dennis, I don't know who would be, um see if you can, on this statement, oh, financial statement from basketball. Um their expenses are their expenses, I'm sure they've done the research as to why they need to spend money. But is there a way this town can save or reduce the thirty seven hundred and eighty dollars that they're that they are paying to Torington to use their facilities?
They charge per use.
I know, but can we find or provide a facility so they don't have to go out and power? This is the heart of it and it's, that's my only question is.
We have, we have three places to practice.
Yeah.
And and it's uh Antolini, New Hartford, uh I'm sorry, two places and Regional. Regional at this time of the year is booked with uh middle school and play school basketball, cheerleading. And you can't have practices up there that start at seven o'clock at night, that's that's part of the big problem.
Yeah, over the year.
We just have no place to practice indoors.
Over the years, we've tried to get, you know, like Sally just said, regional and this, you can't get anything in there. They're they're booked solid, so these guys are looking for other places to uh practice and whatever. So that's just the nature of the beast.
Bill pass. What's his tone?
You know, we're talking capital expenditures, how about a, how about an arena?
Yeah.
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 Can go with the football stadium.
Next to the stadium?
Right next to the stadium.
Oh my god.
I vote we go to.
Inside.
Wait, wait.
Don't start in trouble.
Wait, I vote we go Brody Park South.
Don't start in trouble.
Right next to your stadium, Steve.
So let me ask you. Let me just, am I reading this right? We're spending. What is, what is Herb Sports?
We're not spending, this is basketball, we're not spending any of this money.
No, I no, I mean, but the but these are our our townspeople.
We give them a thousand dollars.
No, no, I know, but just in in the in the real world, we're spending thirty one hundred dollars to use Regional.
Yep.
Thirty seven, almost thirty eight hundred to use St. Francis, is that where they're going? And then.
At East School.
Courtside, is that the Harwinton?
That's Harwinton.
Five fifty. And then what is, what is Herb Sports, is that Canton?
That's, no, no, Herb Sports is uh.
That's gonna be trophies.
Trophies inside?
Uniforms and trophies.
Oh, okay.
Basketball.
Separate rest time.
Well, they got some equipment.
Kenny, blah, 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 it's not uniforms, it's the equipment.
Okay.
Why can't we go to courtside instead of Torington?
They're also booked.
Availability.
It's availability, they they get.
Seven thousand five hundred dollars roughly in rental.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't have any ability to do fundraising hardly, cause they don't have any space to do the the snack shacks that soccer does and.
Right, there is no, there there is no um, like baseball and soccer, we can't have a snack bar or sell anything like that. We have one fundraiser uh a year at Applebee's, which raises about five hundred dollars. But really, that's, there's no, there's no other place to do it. You sell candy, magazines, but people don't wanna do that, you know?
Yeah.
That answers my question. I guess we don't need that basketball, but they follow those.
I'm sorry, I'm basketballing.
What?
You can't just change in mid-street. That's not allowed. Okay, moving right along.
Moving right along.
So that explains why they were asking for a thousand.
More than an hour.
Uh next week, at the last meeting.
Let me run another meeting.
We talked about uh whether we should raise prices and here's the current price list. And what I did was uh checked with some maybe twenty or so other recreation departments to see um uh how they charge non-residents and so on. And that's uh part of that uh packet also. And we we've been at, we haven't raised prices since uh, I don't know, three, four years maybe. And I I think we may be at that point where we need to uh do a small increase. And I'm thinking just five bucks across the board, um you know, wouldn't be a a huge uh blow to, you know, uh parents of. And at five bucks, we were talking about an extra six thousand dollars in revenue if we go across the board. And that's that's beach stickers and uh camp and all the different different things that we do.
Do we also offer hardship on stickers at all?
We don't, we do not offer uh anything on stickers.
Yeah, it's just the camp.
Yeah.
So this current price list, you haven't indicated the five dollar increase.
No, that's what we wanna do now. For two thousand and twelve, uh do we wanna, you know, kick it up a little bit?
I I probably just don't understand this, Dennis, but it appears to me as though our non-resident fee is two hundred and ten dollars higher than our resident fee, but.
For beach stickers?
Yeah.
Right.
But orange non-resident fee is ten dollars more.
Right.
So most of these towns do not charge substantially more for non-residents than they do for residents.
Right.
Do a real lot of stuff with, not that it's bad, not that we need to be in step with them, but I just need to make sure I understand this, that that we are much more expensive for non-residents than most other towns.
When it comes to beach stickers, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's okay, cause our beaches are crowded.
Well, and I also think, looking at some of these towns, that that um they're probably, they're have less non-residents that wanna use that facility.
No, no, I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to be clear that I understood it right. Because yes, we have a great facility and we have lots of residents that really want to use it, so non-residents of, they're so inclined. I don't know, I don't have a problem with it at all.
No, no, no.
Understand it. Alright, you wanna uh think about this and address it in the next meeting?
The one thing I question is, most of the towns are nowhere near us on this fee schedule. Did you contact uh Burlington, Bristol, I think Bristol is the camp, yeah.
Dennis.
Winstead.
Day camp time, so what time?
What time is day camp?
Right now.
Uh two o'clock and then extended day five o'clock.
Where are you going with that, Don?
Well, it just seems that uh they got ready. I mean, come on.
Well, yeah, but.
The the way it works, we, all the rec departments, we're we're a membership and so we sent out a a mass email and people respond, you know, to your email, so that's that's how we get them.
I was just wondering, I I would have been interested to find out what the lo- uh our adjoining neighbors are charging.
Well, it depends. Do they have a facility that's similar to ours?
I don't think Winston has beach stickers. I don't know that Winston has beach.
You know, do they have a facility?
They do.
Well, they have Highland Lake.
Highland Lake.
Yeah, well, that's true. I don't know if they charge the stickers up there or not.
Right.
They might.
And Bristol has a uh tuna pool, I thought it, on Key Street.
Well, they have Rockwell Park.
They have the. You gotta, we need a motion.
To vote on?
To, well, we we need, it's up to you. We, whatever the motion is, we can either vote on the five dollar increase or vote to wait until they re- review it and 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 get more information or vote to leave it alone. We need a motion.
I'm not sure, you know, okay.
The only thing I want to point out is that on the on the day camp, the equivalent is ninety nine dollars a week.
Yes.
For thirty two and a half hours, that's the equivalent of of we're charging three dollars an hour.
It's it's cheap, it's the it's the best thing going in town, yeah.
Well, I mean, when we're talking about having money struggles, being cheap and being able to cover costs is something you need to consider. The the extended camp at four dollars and twenty cents an hour, you got a differentiation there. You know, we charge at four dollars and twenty cents an hour for the extended camp, why aren't you charging four dollars and twenty cents for the regular base rate?
Well, I think uh the, when we froze this price, when it, when we froze it, it was when that bubble burst and we kinda stayed right there, but we never left that doorstep. We never left from that doorstep. And so I think this may be the year that we need to uh kick it up a little bit.
How ma- out of, what percentage of our attendance were, did we help support at the camp?
Did we help support, um.
Two percent, twenty percent?
I I would say maybe i- it increases every year. I would say anywhere from maybe fifteen percent?
So it's still, so it's still a financial struggle, even though it's it's inexpensive. And fifteen percent of our resident campers needed support from the Rec Commission and inadvertently the town.
And I think there needs some clarity data on what the policy is, how that.
Of moving the prices.
But I think there's some clarity needed on policy on what the threshold is for that, because I think that that's something that needs to be defined. But I think at three dollars.
Well, we've had, we've had a consistent definition we've been using, and yes, we may need to be more public about it.
But I can recall ten years ago when I started with my youngest son, I think it was a daycare, for about the same amount of hours a week was a hundred and seventy five bucks. Okay, that was ten years ago.
We're not doing profit there. And we're trying to serve residents to the town.
No, I I just understand, but what I'm trying to draw the distinction is, is that it takes a certain amount of money to to run the town and to provide all these programs and to build rope clo- ropes courses and to do all these things. And that we're having a struggle because we don't have enough money on one side of the coin, yet we're charging three dollars an hour for camp on the other side of the coin. I think that we have to have a frank discussion about what the actual cost of doing business is. And if you wanna do a, you know, uh, you know, an operating, you know, you know, loss, you know, what the the labor is of what you're putting in every day.
I mean, can you find a day camp for ninety nine dollars anywhere else? Probably not. So.
No.
Definitely not, that's a treat.
That's a statement in itself right there.
So do we have, do we, do we have a motion? And then we can debate it?
I'd like to make a motion, I mean, uh, study this for the next meeting and uh find out more about the 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 camp fees. You you don't have any camp fees on the study that we did out of the other one, right?
No, those are just, and those are just regular non-resident uh fees.
So we have a motion to table this and get more, and get more information on camp fees.
Postpone it till our next meeting. More information on the camp fees.
Uh other, other towns can't face.
Yes.
I don't know what words in your mouth. Other towns can't face.
Right.
You didn't have any problem with the five dollars?
Do we have a second?
No, not at all.
Do we have any, do we have any discussion?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, what do you wanna, yeah, I'm sorry. What would you like to say?
Um, a month or so ago, you also had some, you had some numbers that you had drawn up similar to this, where you had the years' participation, residents, non-residents.
Yeah.
If you could get that um to go along these same lines, you know, follow this and have a a current price list and then, you know, another one that has current, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, participation numbers by these same categories, please.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions.
Now, next, next, so we saying next month, we can uh, we will definitely come up, cause the brochure we gotta.
Yes. Right.
Have you, uh, excuse me, but have you already gotten into place about the boat storage for five dollars per day off-season?
Uh, no.
Do we have any peo- people paying that?
We haven't enforced that, but um we probably could have got a few buck, gotten a few bucks off it. We just didn't enforce it.
Five dollars a day, I would guess.
That's a hundred fifty dollars a month.
Yeah, where else are you gonna put your boat?
Inside or outside?
We we kinda just taking the boats off and store them in the uh fieldhouse.
Then it's worth it, it's a hundred fifty dollars, I'm not too bad. If it's inside, I didn't want it.
I'll pay that.
Have you got uh any more on challenge course, Dennis? I think you may have.
The challenge course, I just uh, I just think it's something that I I I think everybody should really look at and it's something that I'm I'm a hundred percent behind.
So it's safe to say that if you had to draw, there's anything on the list, this is a normal priority?
Yes, absolutely, a hundred percent.
Okay, I don't see it on the list.
I don't either, but I am so anxious to hear what this is.
That's, that's the uh, what's that, uh, that's another time Don had talked about the Cotton Hill problem.
East Cotton Hill.
I think you're a little short, Dennis. What about the one meter hill?
There are eight trailers on a cow, it looks like a trailer park.
What are we talking about, Cotton Hill or East Cotton Hill?
East Cotton Hill. There's Surdam Farm that links into the back of Antolini. And on the other side of the road is the Phillips Farm that leads into the Gula property on Cotton Hill.
God has an issue with that down here.
Okay, I got it.
And we were doing substantial rent per month, fifty dollars.
I understand, I got it. I'm moving there next month, Don.
No, it's all at three hundred.
Wow.
We need uh.
I know.
Right, I wanna know what this is.
That's the water, that's the water, that's the water meter.
He just told you.
It's my blood pressure.
Water meter reading.
In thousands.
That was a good story there.
While you're on that, just tell you, the, we did register the water system the way it's supposed to be done by state standards. And they came out and they did inspection. Dennis, you came on, roll around, right? We went through, she's making, you know, technically what they're gonna do is they're gonna tell the town that, you know, whether you use the term violation or room for improvement here, we have a non-conforming water system. So she is going to do just like uh the lady from Department of Public Health that came out for Brown's Corner. And she's gonna tell us that we need to raise the the uh well cap to a certain level. We're gonna have to have testing spigots and filtration or whatever it is. But she's going to outline the pre- procedure that we have to take to get into compliance with Department of Public Health. I've already instituted with Dennis the uh testing procedure. Unlike Brown's Corner where we have three quarters a year, the park is closed in the wintertime because everybody's using Berkshire Hall all winter long. You have to do testing there for quarters. So we are, again, maintaining the goal of full compliance with all state agencies in terms of whatever health standards there are. So we will have a little bit of work when they send us the official letter. I don't have it yet, they haven't completed the report. I imagine it's gonna look very similar to what the letter looked like for Brown's Corner. The the well system at Brown's Corner was already, they wanted us to redo the casing on the well, that's already been done. Mike Coether needed to put in a, that was done by Canton Well, uh Link, was it Brucker, where?
I think so.
So he came in and did that, I think it was seven hundred and fifty dollars or something comes to mind. The testing spigot had to be changed inside the soccer snack shack, that little doorway, so we did that. They needed a full diagram of all underground utilities in terms of septic. We did the best that we could. Nothing exists in terms of a full site plan, so we we drew it to the best of our knowledge and belief. And submit that if that lives to their standards, fine. If they need us to do excavating and recon, we'll do it. But we submitted a a drawing on the site plan of what we believe, we know where the box is, we know where the leach field, we think we know where the leach fields are. We know that there's some sort of uh system off of the baseball snack shack where the sink empties out and we drew that on the link. So we submitted everything that they want for Brown's Corner, we're in the process of trying to comply. And this is all part of that, that meter reading thing is all part of the the testing and the data acquisition that we need to know how we go about installing the ground for septic at at Brody Park. So it says twenty one thousand, it's really two hundred thousand gallons of water over the summer or something like that.
Um, I was curious about this water meter reading thing. First thing, is that second date supposed to be seven twenty, twenty eleven, instead of two twenty, twenty eleven?
Yeah, it should be seven, yep.
Okay, and the second thing, the first two number of gallons, you go from six hundred and forty, is there, is the comma out of place or something? Is that?
I saw that, I think that's a mis- a misread.
You go from six forty four, six hundred forty four thousand to nine hundred and twenty seven thousand to one sixteen, one sixteen thousand. Is that, should it be sixty four thousand, four hundred and sixty, and then ninety two thousand, seven hundred?
Yeah, that doesn't look like the original. I think there's a typo there on the first couple readings.
Yes, there has to be a typo there.
We have uh four individual schools' terms come up December thirty first this year. And due to the lack of a meeting in November, we are a little late in making recommendations to the selectmen. All four individuals are valued members of this commission and have indicated that they would like to be reappointed for another five year term. So I would like to put it out to the commission. That John Mashie, Sally O'Neill, Ed and Maureen, I believe are the four, whose terms expire December thirty first. I'd like to make a motion that the commission recommend to the selectmen at their next meeting, which is December twentieth, that these four individuals be reappointed to our commission.
A second.
Any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, one of the urgencies that, since we didn't have a meeting, we're sort of burdening the selectmen with, is if if we don't get reappointed, we don't have a quorum, because it'll only be three members. That Don and I and Ed Ball will be the three remaining members.
Wow.
And we need four for a quorum, so it'll be pretty hard to function.
You better treat me better. Not mentioning Cotton Hill.
You gotta get your streets right.
Oh, I know it.
It's over there somewhere.
Along with that, we need to set an agenda, our schedule, not an agenda, our schedule for next year. In the past two or three years, we've had it every Wednesday. Dennis has very kindly drawn up a new potential schedule every Wednesday, except July fourth, which I think is a holiday. So he scheduled it for July third. Do I have a motion that?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Recreation Commission meeting dates for the year two thousand and twelve, which would be the first Wednesday of every month, with the exception of July, which would be the first Tuesday, due to Wednesday falling on July fourth.
Do I check that?
You could.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
We can't hear anymore. Don, I can't hear. Don, I can't oppose.
Talking about East Cotton Hill now?
And the final thing, we had an informal vote. I had volunteered to go to Board of Finance meetings and Board of Selectmen meetings just to get a better understanding of what they may need from us. And if anything came up at those meetings that I might be able to clarify on the spot rather than waiting for one of our meetings and formally go through it. And the commission voted to allow me to have me do that and speak on their behalf at these meetings. And just if we can formalize that tonight, do I have a motion? Or do you want me not to go? Which would...
I would like to make a motion to formalize...
Two days a week off, two days a month off.
Sorry, not going to happen. I'd like to make a motion to formally appoint Dan as the Recreation Department's representative in attendance at formal town meetings, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Education.
Transcription.
Now, I'm busy every night. Now, I'm going to be more busy than Dan.
Any formal committee that Dan, Dan will be our representative and liaison between the Red Department Commission and town commissions. That's it?
All I got to say.
I second that.
You second all that, don't you?
With the paper blessing, buddy.
Anything that has to do with East Cotton Hill.
I'll handle it.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. All right, with that...
You momma knows. He tried to.
With that, that concludes tonight's meeting.
Any meeting at?
Oh, that's right.
Can I just bring something to the selection of attention?
Rex, we call him Rex.
We are going to do some additional work down at Brown's Corner, and it involves drainage work.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I don't know if, and I would have called Sally on this, but she's not involved with baseball anymore. So I called Dale Martin, the new president of baseball.
We have a basketball court down there. You could call Sally.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I haven't talked with Steve yet, but I wasn't worried about talking to Steve because I knew he'd be on board. But the corner of the soccer field by two oh two, which is also a left field of Babe Ruth, due to, it's always wet down there, but this year especially so. I know Babe Ruth had to either cancel or play a lot of their games this fall out of town.
Out of town.
And the second and third grade soccer division, I had to move up to Antolini because it was so wet. So I, I contacted Ken Mark Landscaping, which is Ken Hawkins and Mark Bussellini. Ken and I have worked extensively over the years on projects at Brown's Corner. He came up with a design, pretty innovative, some really kind of neat, new, less intrusive products in terms of totally destroying or the field. It involves a series of subsurface drains down that, pretty much parallel to two oh two, draining out down the corner by the two oh two access gate. We're not asking the town for any money to do this. I just wanted to let you know that we're going forward with it.
And you've gained all required municipal approvals?
Yes.
Important little thing to deal with RISTA.
We have, we have a permit from RISTA. No requirement from P and Z. No requirement from...
It's wetlands.
From wetlands.
Right.
I believe. But Ken, Ken got the, applied for the permit and got it. Total cost of the project is close to fourteen thousand dollars. The leagues will pick up the price tag.
Thank you. Very big thank you.
Want to pick up some expenses up?
East Cotton Hill?
The field house. Start throwing that kind of money around, basketball's going to be calling you.
That snack shack, shack must be doing well.
Eight thirty-six.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-six P M.
Second?
Come on.
I second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Unanimous. Thank you.